Good evening, welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, April 8th. Would everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that please put your phones on silent or vibrate so that it doesn't disturb anyone in the meeting. Welcome to the meeting. Appointments. They are going to start with Rodney Boyer. What about Planning Board? If you would come on up, I'll swear your name.
Oh, hold on. Do we want to swear someone first?
He's already sworn.
Yeah, I did that today. Is there any discussion, any reason to go in on public, anybody have any?
Grab her, she's willing.
So, vote to accept.
I'd make a motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right.
And now. Fasten your pictures.
Do you want to read it, or would you like me to read it to you and you repeat after me?
I'll repeat after you.
All right. I state your name.
I, Rodney Boyer.
Do solemnly swear and sincerely swear and affirm.
Solemnly, sincerely, and...
Affirm.
Affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties...
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me as a Planning Board, ultimate.
Incumbent upon me as a Planning Board, ultimate.
Of Barrington, New Hampshire, for three years.
For three years.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the State of New Hampshire.
Agreeable to the...
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws.
And the laws of the State.
Of the State of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And if you... Hand over a pen for a second. If you have your sign and date right there.
I have it.
If you can get it out, we'll...
Right here.
Yeah. Today is the 48th. I will sign it here. See him on the way up. Fresh out. Thank you very much, and welcome to the plane.
Thank you.
Also, under appointments, I'd like to take a minute to just thank George for his service as the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for the past year. We appreciate the time, effort you spent preparing for all the meetings. Your leadership and confidence helped make everything run smoothly and effectively, and the job can be thankless, which we all know, so thank you very much for your service.
I appreciate it all. Thank you very much.
We have a maximum of three minutes per person, and a total limit of 15 minutes. Officer Joy would like to come up?
Mr. Jim. I'm George Joy, filling in for the Chief of Police. I'm the new Deputy Chief of your Police Department. I just real quickly wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen and select women, and the townspeople in general, for supporting the Police Department through the budgetary process in the last year, and also supporting the upcoming renovation, so thank you all.
Thank you very much. Review of minutes from...are there any other public comments? Sorry.
Wasn't listening.
If you notice, I started with the three minutes.
This keeps up with Mark's calendar.
Review of minutes, March 25th. Questions, comments, concerns, objections, I wasn't here, so I have to abstain.
I'd make a motion to...
So I have a motion and a second.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Ape. Abstained. All righty. Staff reports.
So we can handle everything that's on the agenda under the appropriate category, old business and new business. A couple of things in my report I'd like to draw your attention to, just for information. I made and sent out a copy of the all-boards' meeting calendar. I have printed copies, if anybody's interested.
Yes.
Okay, great, yeah. I'll get you one later. And I'll try to keep that updated throughout the year. Obviously, schedules change, but hopefully that can be a useful tool. Wanted to let the Board know that we're starting to work on putting together a recommended charge for the Bike Path Committee. As you know, that was one of the petition warrant articles that passed, so we'll be working on that, so you should see that before you at a coming meeting. We're also working on the internal billing for Highway for Recreation and Conservation, so you should see the draft of that in the upcoming meeting. And we're working to schedule the annual review of the MOUs with Conservation and Recreation. We'd like to coordinate that with the Board, so they're able to be here for that meeting. So you're aware, as we discussed at the last meeting, a letter went to all of the property owners on the Class 6 section of Swain Road. You saw that memo, just notifying them about winter maintenance. Also, a notice was sent to all of Butters of the town-owned property that's out to bid right now, as a courtesy and an invitation to submit a bid. Those bids are due May 6th, and we'll open them at that meeting. I also wanted to point out the work anniversaries for April. So longest-serving, and actually in our presence tonight, George Joy is meeting his 20 years in Barrington this month.
Congratulations.
John Booty is 16 years this month. Camille Brown, the Deputy Town Clerk, is 15 years. Linda Markowitz, our Tax Collector, is six years. Lynn Murphy, our Finance Director, is six years. Katie O'Brien, Leash Lieutenant, is three years. And Kristin Munn, Teseino, from the Library, is celebrating one year this year. A few upcoming meetings and events. So the April 20th is the First Annual Barrington Roadside Cleanup Day, so you've heard about this a little bit. This is being put together by Erin Paradise. She's received overwhelming support from the community, so she's really hoping that this is an event that will continue year over year. If you're looking for information about that, call the Highway Department or the Town Hall. And I submitted the flyer to the...on the...attached to the Town Report, or the Administrator Report. Also, on the 20th is the Library and Recreation Easter Egg Hunt. You can visit either one of their websites to see more about that. And April 22nd, the next meeting. And like I said, Mr. Chair, if you just want to address the items as they are on the agenda, we can go that way.
Problem. Okay. I'm going to abstain from the first one under old business and reduce myself from it. It is a vote to enter into the development agreement to sell two town-owned lots to TurboCam, so I will let Tracy take over from here while I step down there before we... Can I comment on the Town Report? Should we put all town employees' services?
That's your intention each month, correct?
So yeah, I'll do that in my Administrator Report every month. That's my intention, this being month one. If you're talking about the Town Report, which I misspoke, but I think that'd be a nice thing to include in the Town Report also.
So is it all, certainly did to everyone. And this is just an ongoing way to recognize everyone's service date. So try to do it at the first meeting.
Thank you.
So I will bring forward the information regarding TurboCam. The Board is to decide whether to enter into a development agreement to sell two town-owned lots to TurboCam. This is the final step of an RSA 4114A process for the Select Board to authorize the sale of the town-owned land. In this case, it would be a vote to authorize the town to enter into the development agreement, and the Board would review and amend the development agreement at a future meeting. History regarding this issue. TurboCam is planning to build a 32,000-square-foot building for a training center, tool room, and a research and development center. They'd like to build on the previous American Legion lot that enters onto Redemption Road for a front lot. As part of this development, they'd like to ask the town to remove the lot line that separates the front lot and the American Legion lot. This would enable them to add extra parking, a well, and use gravel from the front lot as fill for the building development. The Planning Board recommends the sale of this in a letter dated March 6th. The Conservation Commission recommends the sale in a letter dated March 7th. The Select Board held a public hearing on this issue both March 11th and March 25th. Any public comment regarding this? Chief Walker? Three minutes, Chief.
I have three seconds. I just want to reiterate what I said before. I think that TurboCam has been an exceptional partner for us in town, both from a professional standpoint, through the fire service and personnel as a taxpayer, to look at what they've done. They have a quality product, they have nice buildings, fit the neighborhood, and certainly pay a lot of taxes. Anything that we can do that will help the taxpayers, reduce the tax burdens of taxpayers, I'm certainly in favor of. So from the standpoint of a taxpayer, I certainly would recommend that the Board supports on that land, and so they can continue the business development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the Select Board?
Is there any motion there?
Select Person, air.
I'll support it this time. I still have concerns about future lots and stuff. I've stated all along, and stuff. I want progressive growth in this town, and I will support that one concern.
Any other comments, questions, concerns from the Board?
I just think it's a great idea to get it back on the tax roll.
Good. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Chair, that we make a motion to sell Lot 77 and Lot Number 1.2 to TurboCam for future development.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Please note that Chairperson now abstained. Thank you. Recommendations.
The Board received a copy of recommendation for paving and striping from the road agent. In both recommendations, the road agent recommended the apparent low bidder for paving, that's R&amp;D Paving Incorporated of Franklin, New Hampshire, and for striping, its industrial traffic lines Incorporated of London, New Hampshire.
Dan?
I read through all the bids and stuff, and I found on paving, there's like two, I feel, by reading all the specs and stuff, there's like two qualified bidders on it. And we need to check our checks and balances when our bids and stuff. And the Town Hall is coming up, so it's very important that the bids and specs follow and stuff. So we want to deal with it in the future. And I highlight some things in the thing. I feel Advance and Brock's only qualified, they met all the conditions within the bidding format.
What was left out of the bidding format on the other three bidders?
Well, dimensions. References. References and stuff. Any changes to the word? Subboard. That's good for measure, any alteration of the bid?
Okay.
But basically, go through and stuff. I just read the quest proposal for 2019, and it seems like two are very thorough, everything references, and they're DOT-approved too.
So references, DOT approval, and bid specs, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? George?
Yes, I have a comment. Thank you, Monther. On one of the bids, they scratched out what cubic yards instead of square yards. And being new to the paving terms, I went and I pulled up a piece in the Internet describing what the equation is between the square and the cubic, and it seems that we'll end up paying more with a cubic yard than we will with a square yard, according to the information I have here. If I am incorrect with that, I would appreciate that. Be corrected, so I'd have it...
Can I make a comment? It specifically...
Can you let them finish, and then we'll come back?
Well, he asked a question, I was going to answer the question.
Are you done?
I'm done, sir.
Okay.
Yep. If you notice, it specifically said that part of the bid would not be considered as part of the low bid price, because it said this was an alternate. And granted, the alternate may not be as cheap as one of the others, but it says right there in the bold print above the cubic yard that it was not going to be part of the consideration as to the who was the low bid for the paving project.
Right. But I always just take the low bid.
No, I understand, but the apparent low bid, R&amp;D, that is not adequate grounds to reject them.
Nobody's saying reject it right now.
But that's what Dan says.
No, I said, since we have major projects coming up, and the bids, I felt there's only two qualified, they write all the information to us.
Right. I think right now this is Board feedback and input, so I'll listen to what the Board has to say for feedback and input.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments, commentary? Tracy?
I had a quick question for Peter. Did you ask or require with the bid that insurance, liability insurance was submitted with it? Because not all of the bidders did that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Which of the bidders supplied that information?
I'll repeat, supply it.
I'm sorry, advanced did?
There is not. And I got to say, there is not one of these companies that should be this included. They all know what they're doing, they all paid. R&amp;D have paid for us a lot in the past. They haven't come in a little bit. This year, they actually came in a little bit, and they are more than qualified to do this job.
So I opened the bids, Chairperson Napp, and I was aware that not everyone had included their liability insurance certificate. The low bid on this did include their liability certificate. My recommendation would be to accept Peter Cook's recommendation for the low bid.
Dawn, do you have any comment?
I feel exactly the same way.
Okay. We think everyone's provided feedback. I'm fine with it either way, I wasn't here for the bid opening. So general commentary. Peter, do you have anything else you want to add, besides what you've already added?
I can't believe it.
No, Dan, you just raised your hand. What else?
Well, so we have major projects coming up. We need to have the specs put out and up, that's what I'm saying. Information is provided and up. That's what I want to offer.
So moving forward with that, I would say that if people are not meeting bid spec, we should come prepared to discuss who has and who does not meet the bid spec, and then we would go from there. But by the sounds that I'm hearing, R&amp;D Advance and GMI have met the bid spec and provided the correct information, is that appropriate? With the exception of the cubic yard versus square yard pricing that would be applied for any grinding work that is requested as additional...
That's my understanding as well. So I would make a motion to accept the recommendation that Peter Cook has put forward, and accept the R&amp;D response from R&amp;D.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Full second.
Okay. Full call vote? Oh, sorry, go ahead, George.
Do you have further discussion, please?
Further discussion?
I would like to ask that the motion be amended to ask R&amp;D to supply the square yard for the alternate instead of the cubic yard, please? That's acceptable in Board?
I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You're willing to make that amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the motion is on the table for R&amp;D to perform the paving for the town with the requirement that they amend their grinding commentary from a cubic yard to a square yard? Does anybody object to that?
I believe it's the stone price, not the grinding price.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was grinding was the last...
Cost of materials.
Yeah. Cost of materials to square yard. Whatever the option is on the end of this, let me clarify, is the option.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
That's okay, I'm just, I don't have the whole piece right in front of me, which is not a, no one's issue but my own. Okay. Napp, aye?
Aye.
Ape.
Aye.
Air, no. Okay. The second piece of that is the road striping. There were four recommendations on that. Industrial traffic lines was the low bidder. Peter, has everyone submitted their paperwork as required to meet the bid spec? Did you see anything, Tracy, that didn't appear to be submitted? Okay. Any commentary on that? Nothing? Nothing? Is there...go ahead, George.
No, I have nothing.
Is there a motion to accept industrial traffic lines as the awarded bid for road striping for 2019?
I would make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by George. Full call vote.
Aye. Aye.
Ape. 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 All right. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Approval authority for exemptions and credits?
So this was brought to the Board a few weeks ago, and we let the Board review it a little while longer. So when exemptions and credits are submitted to the town through the state form, K29, our assessing department, our in-house staff, and our contract employees process those applications. The majority are non-discretionary, it's either the creditor exemption applies or it doesn't. Previous boards have authorized Suzanne to sign those exemptions and credits that are non-discretionary. With Suzanne's impending retirement, she thought it was important, and rightfully so, to have the Board pass that authority on to the position of the Town Administrator or designee. Does the Board have any questions?
Just to reinforce what I had said before, can we just not let Suzanne go and not put her retirement?
I'll second that.
I'll go forward and handle that.
I would comment that I would like to continue to see denials.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's basically this time of year, because the deadline's April 15th, so you won't see anything until...
A year?
Yeah.
I'd like to make this motion, then, Mr. Chair.
So motion for the...
Second.
And we have a second for approval authority of exemptions to be signed by the Town Administrator or designee as a group. Very good. Napp, aye?
Aye.
Ape. Ape. Very good.
Thank you. Saves you a lot of work.
All right. GASB 45/75, the actuary statement, you may absolutely speak up.
So in reference to this, I received communication from one of our town residents who has a background, strong background, in accounting, and was slightly dismayed to see what's called a managerial note on our audits. And a managerial note on an audit, for anyone who's not familiar, means that there is an area that our auditors find concerned with and would like to see action on. So we approached the Town Administrator and asked how we could best comply with this. Back when we were not in compliance with this, it was based on some very solid facts, that it was going to be extremely expensive to try and calculate this figure, and that as a participant of a municipality in the healthcare system, there was not a lot of value in spending time or money on a very expensive calculation, because we were to continue to be required to do what we were doing. So there's complete justification why this wasn't addressed on an ongoing basis. Our Town Administrator has since found an auditing firm that could provide a two-year quote or calculation on this for $3,450, 1725 a year. It would remove the managerial note from the audit. There will be nothing earth-shattering discovered in this calculation, but it will help us to be 100% compliant, and therefore, I would certainly recommend we take that action.
All right. Is there any other comments on it? Commentary?
Just an agreement.
Okay. Motion to accept GSB 75 report actuary, actuarial, aerial valuation for two years of service at $3,450?
I'd second that.
Do you move it?
I'm moving it, yes. Nope. Aye.
Aye.
Ape. 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 Fire step and change.
So I'm going to ask, before we get into this discussion, two things. At the last meeting, that you were absent from, Chairperson Napp, we, I think you were absent. We discussed taking the $10,000 that had been proposed as an increase in the firefighting budget, and applying it as an increase to the across-the-board statement for the Call Department. I, based on the calculations that were then put in front of us, I would highly recommend we not do that. I did do a little more research on this, and a lot more review with our compensation group of some reports that had come through regarding Call Fire Departments, part-time per diem employees, and what have you. So there is now a new proposal that would provide two levels, two new levels in basically keeping one group and segregating a command-staff group that would become per diem employees. And that would accomplish two things. It would keep us, as I think we have expressed, we prefer not having 42 new employees. It would move six people into the realm of, or six positions into the realm of paid per diem positions that could be paid at varying levels for command staff. It seemed to me, after reviewing information from a variety of different compensation sources as a... as a subcommittee member, that that made much more sense than what had been proposed prior to this. The difference is it would require the fire chief to obviously do annual performance reviews on the six new per diem.
Absolutely.
Command staff members. The one thing I would say, yeah, so, yes, there would be formal job descriptions for this and certainly we have currently before us the task of putting out for an R F P for full comp study. But nicely, should these be approved, we could include that in the comp study probably for very little additional work on the part of the consultant that you hired.
So, Connor did brief me on this, so I have been, even though I wasn't at the meeting, I am fairly up to speed on it. The one comment that I had on it was, and I expressed this with Connor, was I know that talk was at the end to take the whatever balance of money that was there and do that. If my recommendation would be that to make it a decision of the select board in conjunction with the fire chief, that if we wanted to pay out a portion as a bonus, that that be how we allocate out any additional funds or alternative funds is a favor for the volunteer service that they provide to us.
Interesting concept. Did we run it by the Department of Labor?
I don't know. Our understanding is that because it would be to everybody the same value, it would be in essence the same as having the value at a higher rate the whole time. But my understanding is that quite that specific question wasn't asked, but that was the understanding we were operating under, based on the information we previously received.
Sure. So, I would just run it by the Department of Labor to be sure that that would still be in keeping with a non-employee compensation structure. And the other thing that I would say in reference to that is when the command positions are written and they are placed within our step structures, range structures, that that's clearly going to remove some of the $10,000 from the freed-up funds that would go towards the stipend in general. So, I think that both of, both of those methodologies could be an appropriate way to certainly honor the work of the volunteer fire department, recognize the command personnel that are running both fire scenes and providing mentorship and training. So, I felt like it was a good compromise all around.
So, is there an amended motion on, oh, sorry, is there additional commentary?
Yes, I would just like to have the vote instead of just nullifying our vote from last week and starting over with select versus Hightower's information.
So, who made the vote? Who made the motion last week, or two weeks ago, sorry?
I think it was me.
Would you like to redact your motion?
Sure, I would like to redact my motion that we, or actually override it with, I would like to override what we voted in last month and revise the approach with the additional $10,000. And the revised approach would be to put forward six new position descriptions for six command staff positions, that those would be incorporated in the comp study. Once the comp study was completed, that appropriate amount per hour would be applied based on years of service to those positions for the incumbents that currently are working as volunteers and that they would be transferred to per diem employee status and that after that calculation for the year has been completed, a report back to the board be given so that we could know how much of the increase of $10,000 was still available and in conjunction with that, that the fire chief run by the Department of Labor, the idea of the proposed bonus program at year end. That is the longest motion this morning.
I'll second that.
Ever heard, and there you have it.
I'll second it.
And then, second to that was, I don't know, who seconded that motion?
Last week, you mean?
Two weeks ago?
No, they just.
I just don't know if I had to have, I would have assumed I had to have them agree to override the second with conjunction of Tracy's new motion, which I got.
I would draw my second.
No, no, they just.
Override, override my second, thank you.
With the new proposal. Thank you.
Second this one?
Dan, is that the $10,000 budgeted?
Yes.
And then, Chief Walker, do you have a comment?
I'll do real quick.
In three minutes.
I heard real quick in that, Chief, I heard real quick, I heard you say real quick.
Somebody have a call?
Point of clarification, so we talked about six new positions, but would only be a total of four job descriptions because a couple of them will be.
Six incumbents. Yep. Six incumbents, four jobs, yep.
Yep, that's fine.
Six performance reviews each year.
And also for clarification, if you could just give me an idea of what you want me to be paying, are we staying at our current 15?
Just take it out of your stamp.
We'll come up with something based on our compensation group that's meeting while we're waiting for the full set.
No change for now.
No change for now.
Right. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any other commentary from the board? Anything from?
Just one, following up on Chief Walker's clarification. So, the point value staying at $15 until the end of the year, the, for these five new per diem part-time employees.
Six.
Six, excuse me, these six, is your intent making, taking this vote to have those not take effect until the compensation study is complete where you have a wage? Or would you like us to use a wage in the meantime before the compensation study is complete?
I would like the group that's meeting on compensation to review the two studies that are currently available for them and come up with a recommendation.
In the meantime?
In the meantime, as we wait for the R F P.
That's great, thank you.
I like the way you think I'm trying to bring it down to five, but we did, this off camera is six, sorry. Excuse me. But I'm like one making the motions. All right. So, there's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, I will start. Now, bye.
Hightower. Hightower, fine.
Bailey, I.
Air, I. Very good. Thank you very much. Bridge engineering is next on the list. Yeah, I know, I'm just making sure that I'm keeping my paper together here. So, with the bridge engineering information that's out there, there, we do have the option to have multiple bridge engineers in the process, but we cannot send them out to bid and have them competitively bid against each other. The state doesn't want us negotiating fees, so, and since they do an 80% reimbursement on that, but we do have the option to have multiple bridge engineering firms, or engineering firms on contract. I don't know how everyone feels about it. My personal opinion is I think more options are better, the more tools we have in the tool belt, the better option we are.
Is there any cost for us to go out and obtain these qualification certifications?
Relatively minor, just the cost of adding, you know, putting out the ads and if you put it in the paper, there'd be an ad like that, but we're talking just a couple, $300 total.
Excellent.
Yes, I would have to pay the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Have to pay the firm, we hire the second voice we're going to have on this inspection and watching our project.
So, this wouldn't be a second firm reviewing a project, it just gives us the opportunity to have a second firm available when we're putting projects out to bid. We have three extra bridge projects kind of coming up in the future, so this is an opportunity rather than to just use one, for us to use another, see how it goes. Maybe we end up having a more complete or successful experience with another one, not that we're having an incomplete, successful experience with our current one, it just creates another avenue for us to look at how we move forward with this.
And the state would still contribute?
80%.
Thank you.
Let me get it handed and I'll come back.
The three bridge projects, it's one, they're doing them. Well, actually, two more, not talking Malgo.
Malgo, Green Hill.
Malgo is already under, under going.
Yes, it is.
So, there's two more, but once, they're going to do the plans anyway, we already paid them, so we couldn't really, had to bring someone to oversee that project up too. But we're not getting inspections, anybody for observation, we might just be a third observation, so we have, they'll be qualified.
It's my understanding that because there's no money to expend other than the $200 to $300 advertisement, that a board vote is not required for this, just an agreement that we would like the administration to go out and seek these qualifications.
And what would happen is before it goes out, per board policy would come to the board for review.
Very good. Connor, do you have any commentary? Oh, I missed that, you're sorry.
I just think that, come on, what you're saying, Mr. Chairman, is that the more eyes the better, and I think that's something we learn in our lesson before, so it's no sense of getting burned again.
The only thing I was going to add to Tracy's point about any costs associated with this, to be clear, if any of the, if the two current projects that H T A is working on, if the board for a future stage of that project were to vote to have the contract awarded to another engineering firm, there certainly would be an additional cost in having that work transferred from engineering firms. We haven't asked the Department of Transportation if they pay the additional costs of having work transferred, but just to be clear, that in the future, if the board were to make a decision like that, there might be a small cost involved.
John?
And my thought on the R F Q, we often give a design project for them to evaluate and that we would use the proposal out on, by the boat launch on Young Road as an example of how would they respond, what ideas they have, as part of the R F Q. And they might be assigned that project.
Okay.
Even though there's no state money.
Right.
Look at that.
Yeah, it's not a bad thought on that. Dan?
Since John brought that up, the state of all these field culverts, just leaving them in a joke, joking road on it, that's an alternative.
I would expect that to be considered in the R F Q.
Okay. So, you just need from us an agreement on this?
Just indicate to us you want us to develop, before we spend time on it, we'll make sure the board is interested in us doing something.
So, should we do the opposite and see if anyone's opposed?
Is there anyone who objects to them spending a little bit of resource on this? Nothing? No one from the board? All right. Very good, we proceed forward with that. Moose Plate Grant signing authority, the Moose Plate Grant requires specific signing authority to be dedicated by, decided by the board along with the grant acceptance. Would you folks like me to be the signing authority for it or do we want John or Connor to be the signing authority?
I can motion the chair to be the signing authority.
And to approve the grant.
Yep, so the grant means that the funds go to conservation and heritage within the town of Barrington.
Correct. For that particular project. They're specifically to be used on the Panish. Rubenstein. Haley. Haley project.
Excellent. So, I would second that motion.
Air, I.
Bailey, I.
Hightower, fine.
Doesn't matter. Now, bye. Building committee charge, so we have hit the point where we, the board asked administration to recommend a charge for the town hall building committee. The board's asked to approve the charge for the downtown hall building committee.
I appreciated with this one that we were going to include the staff who clearly are the largest stakeholders in this, along with our residents, who clearly have approved it. And I did like the idea of utilizing a previous R F P to go forward with creating the building committee. I do very much like the idea of using some of the prior materials that are sitting in a bucket that cost us over $300,000 as a way to look at designs that have already been proposed and cut from them what needs to be cut, add to them any technology room or needs, cooling systems come to mind, things like that. So, I think it's important that we have a committee overseeing this.
Dan?
I attended staff meeting last Wednesday, I got a lot of good input and I'll reveal that future date.
Okay. So, with the building committee, one of the recommendations that I would have is it's really no more than five to six people at that point. When you try doing anything by committee, it gets to be too overwhelming. The second comment I would have on that is that the committee be charged with setting up the draft recommendations and working the plan together, but not overseeing the execution of the actual building project, because then you're trying to build by committee and that becomes, you end up with the Homer Simpson car of life.
Okay.
Does that mean you're using the page one, the number eight?
Committee will not actually be part of the construction oversight, yes, that would be.
Thank you. All the concerns I have.
Other commentary, thoughts, feedback?
I think it's important that we have this committee.
So, I'm assuming at this point we want to start looking at who we would want to be part of the building committee. So, for the next meeting, have a preliminary plan around who we would like to invite to be part of that building committee or anybody that would like to.
Encourage to volunteer.
Volunteer to be part of that committee.
Does the board have any input tonight for what they'd like to see the makeup of that committee be in terms of, you know, any member of the board, a certain number of members from the public, whether staff would play an active role or provide information?
I know I will share my opinion on it, I believe that there should definitely be a member of the board, there should be at least a member of staff that works in the building, who has some say over it, or somebody to put to it, I guess, not necessarily say. And then, beyond, obviously, I think town administrators should have a voice in it since you will be the one who lives in that building for years to come. And then, beyond that, I guess whatever anybody else thinks, that's just my view.
So, from a staff perspective, John Huckins would certainly be an excellent choice in reference to that, given the code enforcement, his understanding of building code.
Would that be a conflict?
Yeah.
Of interest with John because of the fact that he's going to have to do the sign-off on a lot of other things at the same time? That'd be a question I would ask of the chair.
It's, I don't think it would be a conflict from the standpoint that he's being charged with kind of helping organize and lay out the building. I don't, I don't perceive that as a conflict.
And to create and approve the R F P based on his knowledge base of, and let's be certain that the codes follow and any other code I don't know of.
Right, and then when the building actually happens, his charge is already over at that point, so he would be acting completely independently from what the charge was initially.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the biggest concern, John has expressed that he cannot be the clerk of the works or anything like that because his job is going to be to inspect.
Right, right.
I will ask him if he's willing to serve on the committee and if not, I'll try to find somebody else who I feel would be appropriate to serve from within the staff, so Connor and one other staff member, a selectman, and then two or three members of the public.
Yeah, I was thinking an engineer, someone else comes to mind, it's Dale Sylvia, who's fire code and both code enforcement.
Maybe a key's brat.
Yeah, so I think we have a lot of possibilities.
What about, I'm on train wreck right now, I'm trying to think of the gentleman's name who is in charge of our buildings and facilities.
Paul Sanderson.
Thank you. Wouldn't Paul be a person we would want to have involved in that? Since technically he is the guy who's supposed to maintain.
Oh, okay. Does he maintain the town side as well? Okay.
And he would have really good input, whether he was a member of the committee or not, he would have really valuable input for the type of systems that we would install that he's trained in, that they use in the schools and things like that, energy management.
I think the one other thing I would say is if any of the people that we're recommending we're thinking of are not available, potentially when the committee is done. more thinking of are not available, potentially when the committee is done, as with any task force, they could certainly run it by these experts.
I know we've done several proposals for buildings that we've built, and I'm gladly provided for matching up what we've built there, and also kind of looking at what, I know we've spent to build buildings, as well as what we are spending.
Does it count if I will have someone not volunteer anything?
Dan?
I'm just sort of like counting in my mind, you're saying like three people from the public, and maybe like two alternates, and then like two or three staff, so like eight, seven, eight people?
Six people, too many. No alternates. You have a board that is, or a committee that has been drafted with the charge of setting it up and getting the proposals, RFPs together, but they will not be in charge of building the project.
No, no, I'm not.
Anything, anything above, I think eight is the set number, becomes way too large for committee, and six is, five or six is the target. Five is nice, because you have, you always have a, you can make a vote that goes one way or the other, where six, you can split it.
So if there's no other discussion, I would make a motion to create the charge of a Buildings Committee with up to six members.
Okay.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
And our comments that, Mr. Chairman, the comments that you put together, how do you want to handle it? Just drop off with Connor, and he can review them.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good. Moving right along. Who misses?
Highway Excavator. The road agent has brought forward a request to go out to bid for an excavator rental this year. The anticipated cost makes this purchase, through the purchasing policy, require board approval, review and approval. So this would be for a mini excavator rental for, from May 1st to October 31st.
So I have general, general comments or conversation around that. Rentals are great and serve a purpose, but I know a couple of things, based on the number of hours that we utilize that we could hire a person to come in and run it, and do what we need to for what we spent. And then also, secondly, I have done the leasing of equipment before, and when leasing equipment, what I ended up finding this past year was, in my case specifically Caterpillar was running a really great deal, so I was able to purchase a piece of equipment. So I bought a piece of equipment, and with their 0% financing, which I didn't end up using, but was able to actually, on a year-over-year cost basis, own the equipment for less for the entire year than I could rent it for four months or for five months.
Thank you.
So I don't know if that's something we've looked at, but ideally, I'd love to explore all of the options. What is the rental cost? What is the purchase cost, split up on a year-to-year basis, total cost of ownership? And I was looking at a, at a 60-month payment on it, and it was still less than it was, and I didn't, like I said, I didn't have a going to the payment plan, I just bought it. And then also, what is the cost to just sum it out, have somebody come in and bust that out, and do the work that we would need.
So it's my understanding that before we would put this forward for a vote, we would gather those three areas of information?
Yes.
Dan?
We have no sewer of water, so the man who asks for a year-round is not needed in this town, and a short amount of period, that we use it, summer, six, or six months. And then we store it for six months, so we buy, we have to buy it really cheap, justified in my book. So the rental or sub out the work is better, because we're not, can't store it for the month, and doing nothing with it, and we're not changing oil. Change oil on that screen, filters, is four or five hundred bucks.
Ideally, I'd like to gather all the information and make an educated and informed decision.
But the hours we have put on in the last three years is not that much for the whole year. The cost, the cost rented, we had each of us have it out.
No, I'm, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Don, you started to say something before I called in, I didn't hear anything.
No, I just agree with what you say, to look into the three.
Options.
So the, the only other thing to consider, and I think we'd have to ask Peter this, if the equipment is needed yesterday, as opposed to waiting two more weeks for this response, he, he or his employees may need this sooner rather than later, and I think we need to ask him that question.
The reason I wanted to remember is so we can get going on our projects, if we kick it back two weeks, we're going to kick that project back two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. It could be, you're working at somebody else's, when you rent, when you, when you work on, hiring it out, which we've always done in the past, up until about five years ago, we were always on somebody else's schedule. You know, so basically what it's going to do by doing what we're doing, this is going to delay the paving projects, it's going to delay stuff like that. I came forward last year, once I actually had them do this, if you remember right.
So I have a question, why would it delay paving projects since?
Because, by the way, we still got paving, we still got ditch work to do on Stillwater.
But I was, I was under the impression that the ditch work was all done the year before, that's what we've talked about at prior meetings.
No, no, it used to be done that way, but we're so, we're not doing it that way. All our roads are shim and overlay, are ready to go now. Our roads that are reclaimed, such as Stillwater, has culverts that need to be replaced before we pave.
So that was something I know we had talked about last year, was making, and, and the feedback I know we received as a board was that all the ditch work, culvert work was all done the year prior, and then the, and then the paving was done the next year, and was ready to go for that next year.
Yes, and so this year, what happened? We ain't at that, we ain't at that level. We still got culvert work to do, we, we still got, you know, winter sets you back, fall sets you back, everything sets you back, I mean, so, you know, I mean, if you want to hire all this work out, and you think that's the cheaper way to go, that's fine, just look at me and say, hire it out, and I'll do it tomorrow, and we'll do everything all at once, and be, and be ready.
Thank you for your comments, Peter.
I mean, I mean, if that's what you want to do, then, then as a board, just, just look at me and direct me to do that, that's all. I mean, we, we do this every year. Paving ain't the only thing we do. We're a small group of guys, we do ditch work, we do culvers, we do mowing, we do tree cutting, we do coal patching, we do brushwork, we work at the dam, we work, we, we're doing all this stuff, and then when you throw in, you get thunder and lightning storm, or a windstorm, and you're out picking up trees for two, two, three, four days that got blown down that you were preparing for. That all's got to figure into.
What do we anticipate the total cost of the rental is?
$25,000 was last year.
What would be the cost to sub it out?
I'd have to find some, once again, are we going to get a cost for what it would do, or are we going out to bid to get a cost of what it would do? I mean, I've come, I've come before and said, for example, the floor at the shed, this is what it's going to cost, I was asked to get a price, I got a price, and then it was like, well, we need to get bids. Do you want me to get bids for this, or do you want me to get a number for this, just a number?
I would, my suggestion to the board would be we would get bids, because it's likely going to be above $10,000.
So, and I had a quick question, we received an agreement that expired, what was the total amount of that last year?
On what's that?
On the rental of this.
The lease purchase.
Remember what it was?
I don't, I don't have the top of my head.
So they ended our lease, lease-to-purchase option on that?
Yes.
Okay. It's kind of a raw deal.
Yeah, that expired in December, or November.
So I would say this, based on the information that we've just been provided, the need to expedite the work, and the need to be able to perform the work based on the timeline of the Highway Department, not on the timeline of an actual contractor, that we should do a few things, potentially approve this, so that the RFP goes out for the rental, and at the same time, get information gathered for the following year, so that we know what it would cost to hire someone, and include in that timelines, and what it would cost to actually purchase the equipment.
Are we leasing on a month-to-month basis?
Are we leasing on a month-to-month basis, Peter?
Monthly basis, yeah. We rent it on a monthly basis, you could, you could, it's like I said.
So if we're leasing on a monthly basis, we can easily have the rest of this informa, we could rent it for a month, and easily have the rest of this information gathered, and ready to go before the next meeting, or by the next meeting, that's two weeks to, to get moving on this. And I know with a couple of quick phone calls, you can figure out the purchase information really quickly, and you can also figure out that you can get RFPs together to get out to people, based on what's there, and we can line them off as we complete, if need be.
So you want to rent it for a month?
If, if the board is.
I'm just trying to get this straight, that's all. You want to rent it for a month, and you want me to go out and get prices of what one would cost, or what are prices to have somebody come in and do the work?
Well, we're going to have a monthly lease rate, so we know what it, we know what it costs us to rent it for a month. We're going to have, we would end up getting a purchase price rate, to see what it would cost to purchase an appropriate piece of equipment, and then we would end up getting a cost to rent it out, or sub that work out, and hire someone to do it for us. What, the way I look at it is, if you're renting equipment, you want to utilize that equipment as quickly and efficiently as possible, that way you're not spending a whole lot of money to do something while it sits there, because you're paying for it to sit, and we don't run it very many hours when we have it, but yet, we spend a pretty large chunk of money to do that.
Oh, yeah, I'm not going to disagree with you, but you're going to loop street four or five days in the summer, a week, a month, on, on just raining, there's nothing you can do.
So I run all the same, well, I won't say they're the same, I run all projects like that for all of our locations, and you set a plan on when you're going to do something, you set a rail and an action list, and then you have alternate dates in there, rain dates that fill in your void. That's just business planning.
Business planning is, is mother nature, you're at her mercy.
Yeah, so this isn't going anywhere, so I think we're done with that, what would the board like to do?
I'm trying to have a civil conversation, and then you're going to shut me?
It's rude, we're not.
Yeah, it is rude, okay? It's very rude. I've come in here for three years, and I've been attacked, 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 attacked. Everything I've done is attacked, attacked, attacked.
Peter, no one's attacking you.
Yes, they have, okay? Let's be honest, you keep talking about open and transparency, I have been attacked every time I come in here, every time, okay? So don't sit there and say it ain't happened, it's happened. And give me the smirk all you want, Andy, because you know what, as of this moment, I resign, I am done doing this job. Find yourself somebody else to do it, who's going to work for free all weekend long, do it. Thank you very much for treating an employee that way, thank you.
I would like to thank Peter for his many years of service, he's been with the town a long time.
You've got what you wanted, you've actually got what you wanted, heavy, sweet young you, you've got what you wanted tonight.
Peter, I don't think that's anything that, what we're trying to do, we're trying to set up.
You know it, and it's true.
Peter, we are trying.
I have been told it by former selectmen, you don't say no.
We're trying to set a productive path.
And I was trying to be productive, and I was trying to have a civil conversation, okay? If it's not true, if it's not true, how come a member of the board of selectmen filed a complaint with me against, with the police department, and it got turned over to Snare Chaffrey County?
Peter.
How come? No, there's no, and then I ended up paying for it, so I'm supposed to be happy about that? Any other, any other employee would assume your asses.
Thank you, Peter, thank you for your service, thank you for your, well, not thanking you for your resignation, but I guess we have to, we accept your resignation.
I think we ought to sit back and look, call it in, meet with Peter, and maybe we work out, it's a, it's a hard situation, both for Peter, both for the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move this go to non-public for discussion.
I assume that's under personnel?
Yeah, that's correct. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman. On my, on my request, I should say, sorry.
I'll second it. Can we do this with all of our other non-public at the end, or are you requesting we do it now?
We can do it at the end, sir.
Okay.
I think it'd be better to give everybody a chance to evaluate, which is take their place and go from there.
Yeah, I prefer to digest.
I, yeah.
Stuff like that.
So it appears to me that the board recommended three things take place, that we continue a one-month, we have only excavator rental, that we obtain the cost to do a 60-month financing agreement for a new piece of equipment, and compare that to the rental, and that we obtain an overarching amount of what it would cost to contract these services. So I would make a motion that we obtain all of those bits of information, and continue a monthly lease on the excavator.
Could Connor take care of that? Working with the staff?
I would second that motion. Dan?
Yes, I can call on a couple phone numbers of businesses, and S U R, Runcity City, Dover by the hour, Balance Land, Advance, and there's a couple of other ones. Or you can call John, that is familiar with Rochester and Dover, you can call and get numbers, you know, I don't think, but you get it from their vendors.
You actually have, you can waive the purchasing policy, you can rent for a month and be under the amount that purchasing policy requires.
Right, we're going to be under $5,000 initially, and then $10,000.
So if you want to authorize immediately renting, we can do it on the basis of quotes, and get it more quickly here, but I think we also need to find out what subcontractors would charge, and we need to get a purchase price, which is a bid that's going to take us probably at least two weeks, if not a month.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I got on the phone today and I called three different vendors, it'd be $125 for a big Escalier Remitite, 318, that size, one that you see on the sides of the roads, on highways, where the Trista Wester goes around 360 and stuff, with operated fuel, but then you have paper mobilization.
Right. So. At the beginning of the whole conversation, let's just go, go out and figure out the information, and then we can, go from there.
I'd like to move a motion for just to go out and rent it for a month, so we would have the equipment available.
I would second that.
There we go.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what you?
Yeah, it was a motion to rent it for a month, move forward with getting the.
The other information.
Yeah, the other information, as specified pricing in.
Yeah, and that's, Tracy had moved that, and you would second it.
Yep. So.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right. Board Committee Assignments, so I have several emails of people vying for board slots. I know Dawn would like to retain her spot on the ZBA, I know George would like to retain his place with the library, I believe Tracy would like to retain her place with REC, and Dan, would you like to remain with the Conservation Commission?
And Town Lands.
Town Lands, and as an alternate to the Planning Board?
Not really, but after I will.
Well, they've gotten enough members, they have more members now.
Yeah, for Andy, Andy, his kid's sick.
Oh, wow, okay, that's right.
I'm willing to do that, if I really want to be active, I feel it's a conflict to make construction stuff, but dude, since I don't have a child and you do, I will go up with your kid.
You know you want to see the note that just popped up here next to me, so, that you would remain, stay on as an alternate, is that what you're saying?
For your kid only.
Thank you. Child, we appreciate that. So it leaves us a hole with the school board, that's, it's the one board that I think has the most, what, nine weeks? In fact, it's Tuesday, it conflicts with the Planning Board.
And I can't.
So is there somebody that would be able to, um, step up and attend school committee, school board meetings? That, the plus side, if I can sell it, is they are legitimately an hour and out of it.
Um, no, they're not televised. If, if they were televised, I would certainly create a review and we'll report of, but I can't attend them.
They do a very good job, um, with their minutes and also with getting their information in front of the public.
Do we have the ability to impact that group other than to speak during public comment?
Nope, just the ability to-
To monitor what they do, right, in essence.
Since they're, since they, they do drive seventy-three percent of their, seventy-six percent of the tax rate, it is a pretty significant part of what happens around.
That tax, that tax rate just might be going up because it doesn't look like Conker is voting in favor of a lot of facilities, but it helps sustain us a little bit to, uh, have a lower tax rate.
Um, I'd like to resign to the, yeah, Conservation. Um, that's on Thursday nights. That can free up a, for someone else, another board member, and then I can do the school board.
And not if you're going to planning board. Right.
I just can't, I can't as kid. I can be with, the chance of it, Andy's kid. Well, but I could-
Is it the same Tuesday?
It could be, it could be.
So, but I don't, I, luckily last year, I only had to go twice.
I try not to miss meetings. Um, so, general thoughts is, is there some, oh, sorry?
Anything else for me?
Um-
Did you have anything else for me? I'm sorry.
I, I believe we are good. Yeah, thank you very much, Rick.
Thanks.
And it looks, it looks like the school board and the planning board don't overlap frequent. They do occasionally. So-
That's, they were, they were exactly the same the entire last year.
Oh, maybe I'm colorblind.
Oh, Townlands, I still can do that. That's on Saturday mornings or Wednesdays.
I'm sorry.
Blue and purple is the same.
I still can do the Townland Committee.
It is the same.
That's what I thought.
See, I can't tell the difference between blue and purple.
Mr. Chairman, I do the library. I'm an author to the ZBA. I'm a regular member on the ABC.
We have voluntary resigning.
I could do the first meeting of the school board each time. If someone could do the second meeting of the school board each time.
I'll take one.
Okay, so, yeah, so I can do, so any of the ones that are, are the first ones, I can take. I cannot take any of the second ones.
I'll take the second.
If all of my board trustees.
What is it, what time, see, I was on it for three years.
Six to six.
Yeah, six to seven.
It's six to, six to seven.
Wait, no?
It's in the, um, Albat, uh, building to the side of the elementary school.
And they don't meet, don't they stop a meeting in the summer?
They do. They actually, yes, they do.
The, the one that they stop, that's the one's mine.
Well, I'm away July second, so no one's coming during July.
And I think even if something had to be missed, it's better than that.
Yeah, so I could do, you know, May, May seventh, June fourth, August sixth, September third, October first, November fifth. I can, I can do those.
Okay, so I'll do the, the eighteen, nineteen, what is this? This is-
Yeah, that's an overlap, so the twenty, you'll take the twenty-first. I'm gonna starve them, June eighteenth.
Twenty-first, we've got something going on the twenty-fourth.
Have that Mrs. Hatch circled out?
Oh, yeah, I-
Tracy hasn't circled for, no, my mom said I don't need to.
Okay, so I'm doing the, the, uh-
I put stars on the, just so I know that you're covering those. That's probably a good allocation of time.
Yeah, that's good, that'll work. Yeah, hand, people.
Okay, so you, so basically what I'm gathering out of this is everything is staying the same under its, under the existing, uh, meeting schedule, with the exception that, um, Tracy will take the first meeting of the month for the school board and Dawn will take the second.
Yes, yeah.
Correct. Thank you very much.
And you already did one.
George?
Just, I have a request while we're on this particular part, Mr. Chairman.
That's, yeah, okay.
I would like to update the, if it has not already been updated, the, uh, to contact people that can contact the attorney, if we could verify that. I don't know if you have a list of that?
I was gonna wait until there were elections and then straighten it out. I assume elections as in, make sure that, like, the zone, like Conservation just changed who the chair was and-
Well, I do think that the chairperson of the select board needs to have access to our legal-
I agree, I will.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, yeah. You can get that out of the way, then the other people have to be notified when the time comes.
I, I think you-
Yeah, and I'll change the ones that I know already and update it.
It's gonna be here, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and it's the twenty-second or the fifteen?
No, it's, it's already done. Some will all the way down to, so sixteen.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, um, so moving on from that, everyone has agreed with the assignments. There's universal consensus here with everyone staying where they are and then picking up the school board. Thank you very much. Um, tax needed home repurchase. The select board received a formal request from a former homeowner to repurchase their tax needed property. Uh, the former owner is responsible for all unpaid taxes, penalties, park rent, interest. Um, so asking to authorize the former owner to repurchase the property, is there any discussion, commentary on that? George?
Yeah, I have a quick, uh, how many years?
We just took it in October.
Thank you. And this is my question, in the three years.
Uh, any other comments, discussions?
Um, I don't think that the town should be in the business of owning properties, so if there is no impact to the town, please, for the luck of God, sell it back to the homeowner.
Yeah, I would also agree, so-
Board supports.
Board supports. Do you even wanna call vote on it?
No.
Is it planned out? No? All right. Uh, moving on from there, um, under, go ahead, George.
If, if, if I may, on the new business?
Yeah.
Uh, this is going to be discussed in non-public, but I do wanna put in, uh, for the record, the letter that we received from the town of Stratford, the board of selectmen. Yes, it's selectmen there. And, uh, I just wanted-
I'm sorry.
But anyway, I just would like to make, uh, for the record, there's a March twenty-seventh letter they sent us back concerning, uh, some work that we wanna have done on the, uh, it's not located, it's settlers, settlers' roads. I just wanna make sure that's attached to the bottom of the record. That's for broad legal reasons later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Okay.
Stuck one over there.
All right, the, uh, the other item that under new business, so I would just like to bring up is just a reminder that phone contracts are due June first, so, um, having the, uh, the, whether it be the tech committee and the, um, the current technology company that is working for the town will keep reviewing whether we wanna exit that contract or not. We have to let them know by May first. So just something to keep prepared or in your minds for the next meeting. To use the Office 365 program, uh, as the software behind the phone system and look into leasing or purchasing phones to replace the, yeah.
I'd like to see the 365 incorporate this calendar. I mean, I spent, my typing skills are lacking, so it took me hours to transform that into, uh, my computer and into my phone, even though I have recharge, they are whatever it is. I'd like to see that happen if that's possible.
I'll work on that. So hang on one second. Uh, MOUs, we've already talked about that you're gonna pull the information on there. And then, uh, another item that always tends to come up and I think sneaks up on us are schedules. Like, one of the big ones that always comes up is the highway department goes to an adjusted schedule. So I wanna make sure we get in front of that this year and have a conversation about it before it just happens. Dan, go ahead.
Um, new business?
Yep.
There's been a lot of concerns about the Drew Pond and stuff, under the guy and stuff. The state is looking into it. I went there, met with the state today and stuff. There are some strategic concerns and they are gonna be addressing. They will follow up with the county commissioner.
Very good.
Also on that subject, I received a email from, uh, Marsha saying that, that also the state has contacted her and they're looking in to see if there's any agreements that date back quite a few years, more than twenty years to look into that. So, that's, that's working fine.
Is there any other new business or anything that we need to, anyone else has to offer up?
Who's her?
Very good. Select person's report.
How about my staff report?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Suzanne, your staff report.
She's already retired before your time.
Wow. Um, we can't, we did the plan and book appointment. Um, I have an application, elderly exemption denial and you've, um, the eviction notices that have been signed. John Wallace and the appointment to local advisory, management, um, advisory for Lamprey River. There was an intent to excavate, uh, the license plate grant, which is here. Uh, vendor manifested it April fourth, payroll manifested it March thirty-first and, um, it's April seventh. And they've kind of made their way around.
Thank you. No, I know, but that's what we, we, we had a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Dan?
Well, Townlands, I mean, they have not met last meeting and then Conservation has not either. Oh, well Conservation, we have a new chill lady. Um, she was here last week and introduced herself and we signed her. Uh, you missed Andy.
Was your vote taken by the Conservation Commission?
Yes. And she just swore her in last week.
So you did have a meeting?
No, we didn't, but the meeting before, I missed, they didn't do that, and then she came last week.
Yeah, okay.
And then she sent out a very nice email introducing herself and did some, started the procedures. She tried to fill John Wallace's-
Just make a point. Make a point.
All right.
That's what it.
George?
I had the, uh, meeting with the library, just, uh, getting ready. They were setting up again for next year. And also I, I will make a comment is that I was fortunate enough to get several of the, uh, plants that they were giving out and I brought, uh, one to church and went on to go to an elderly person at the church. And the one that I have is, is, it's just still going. It's, uh, flowers are there and it's, it's starting to grow other stuff out of the pot, so, but it was a good time, so that's all I have to report. I hope they made a lot of money, but which I'm not aware of. Thank you.
Recreation has not met.
Dawn?
Would you believe we have two hearings?
No way.
So we do have two hearings next, what, on Wednesday, on the seventeenth.
And, uh, I was traveling in Washington, I'm out of town, so I haven't been to a planning board meeting. So, and Dan, uh, you attended the last one for me, 'cause I was out of town. A while ago. It's been a while.
The last one?
The last. Uh, well, the one before that, 'cause there were two that I haven't been to.
Oh, I never got a call.
Okay, just two quick things.
That's why you don't get a call on all these things.
That's right, right, he doesn't get calls. Connor had a couple items he'd like to share. I also just wanted to mention that the, um, compensation study task force had its first meeting. It was very productive. We're working on developing the scope for the compensation study and I imagine it'll take a couple more meetings before we have an RFP prepared, but progress is underway. Uh, also, I just wanted to mention for the public record that, uh, we have, uh, a handful of lots, town-owned lots out for bid. Bids are due, uh, May sixth. And if anybody's looking for more information, it can be found on the town's website. And I have copies of the flyers if any of the select board members would like to take them for any reason. We can repost that.
Somebody needed it.
Yeah, let's hope they want a bid. All right, uh, public comment? No public comment? Uh, any other comments from anyone else before we move? Um, I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public for land personnel renovation.
Second, I would like to add legal to that too, please.
Legal, all right. I'll second that.
I second it.
Okay, naff aye?
Naff aye.
Article five.
Very good. Uh, we will be coming, yep, we will be coming out. Um, I don't know if there'll be any, any notice. Okay, uh, motion to seal the minutes of our non-public session.
I'd make a motion and we seal the minutes for the-
Indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
I would second that.
And, and you need to state the reason for it, which is to ad, to avoid adversely affecting the reputation of the person.
The reason I'm doing that is to adversely affect the reputation.
To, to avoid adversely.
To avoid adversely affecting the reputation.
Yes. And we second it. Can I second to that? Uh, we'll call vote. Naff aye?
Naff aye.
Article five?
This is Justice Silman's.
Justice Silman's.
Uh.
Naff aye. So the announcement is?
It's on.
It's on, yep. Our announcement is, um, in a public meeting tonight, Peter attended his resignation. Uh, after very careful consideration, the board has accepted the resignation and, um, that is all we have to say and thank. We would just like to recognize and thank Peter for his forty years of service to the town of Barrington and, um, that's all. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, second that motion to adjourn.
Naff aye?
Naff aye.
Article five?
At your.
Naff aye.